Not about dollars and cents. It's about creating something really special that's going to make a wonderful positive difference to other people's lives.
A panel of up and comers in various industries also talked about the business climate and why they operate out of L.A.
What we see is, you know, aspiration. The cool thing about L.A. is that so many people have come here to follow their dream.
Then there's the guy who started Tinder, an app for meeting people. You could say his business is going global.
There's two scientists in Antarctica. I think there's like 30 people living in Antarctica who met on Tinder.
As for the future, these bright minds see free Wi-Fi for everyone. Branson himself is putting up more satellites so more of the globe can get connected. For him, it's about giving back and making the world a more earth-friendly and people-friendly place with maybe a touch of British hospitality.
Hi there, ma'am. Would you like some chips?
Chips? I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Branson started his Virgin Atlantic Airways more than 30 years ago. Most of his competitors at the time are no longer in existence. While another airline joins the LAX family and strengthens ties with our neighboring city, Rasha Goel has more on how this new route connects directly to our southern neighbors.
A smooth takeoff for Interjet Airlines as it inaugurates its new non-stop route from Guadalajara to Los Angeles. The airline's fleet is one of the newest and most modern fleets among all Mexican carriers.
Mexico is one of our largest markets. In fact, we had more visitors from Mexico to Los Angeles through this airport last year than people live in the San Fernando Valley. 1.8 million visitors.
Officials say the arrival of this airline renews the bond and the growing relationship between Mexico and Los Angeles, as Mexico continues to be L.A.'s number-one market for inbound visitors.
With Guadalajara being LAX's second-largest international airport, with passenger demand of 685,000 people every year.
Interjet has been in the market for 10 years and flies to 49 destinations, 37 of which fly into Mexico, and 12 are international.
We provide snack and beverage free, including alcohol, beer. We provide exclusive toilet for women aboard. Pet-friendly, you can dedicate one of the pieces to carry your pet.
We expect many, many more links that Interjet is going to be building in the U.S., but this is one of the most important.
Interjet is located in Terminal 2, the recently renovated terminal.
We are committed to transforming the entire airport experience to a world-class one. You see the transformation has begun in many of our terminals, from the Tom Bradley International Terminal to this very terminal that we're in today.
Interjet will now add to that world-class experience, as it is known for providing high-quality service at reasonable prices. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Interjet will be offering one flight per day, and passengers can depart from Mexico City connecting in or flying nonstop from Guadalajara. While a high school in the valley retains its dominance in L.A.'s prestigious Science Bowl contest, as Gil Reyes reports, the team now advances to the national finals.
Why?
Why is correct. 10 points for today. Congratulations.
North Hollywood High School wins it again. Their A-team beat all the others to capture this year's regional Science Bowl championship.
It feels great, all this work, and we've earned it.
It's the culmination of a lot of studying, yeah.
The Valley Whiz kids also give credit to months of twice-a-week team practices, including hours of training with the game buzzer. North Hollywood High remains the team to beat, having won 17 of the last 19 local contests.
I know the crowd is never rooting for us, and that's okay. I wouldn't be either.
What was your, what's your strategy? How do you guys do it every week?
You know, it's a lot of things. We have a great student body, and we recruit hard, and we recruit young, and we just work really hard at it.
And it's not just North Hollywood. All 250 students, representing 25 competing schools, are at the top of their class in Los Angeles.
We've had students go to MIT, Yale, Caltech, so it attracts, like I said, some of the best students in the city.
Among them, Lincoln High School's team captain Cedric Argueta. Argueta recently made headlines for being one of just 12 people in the world to answer every question correctly on the Advanced Placement Calculus exam. President Obama has invited him to the White House. Though Lincoln High was eliminated early, Argueta, a graduating senior, was gracious, speaking highly of the DWP-sponsored event, which also included this hands-on competition. In all, more than $25,000 in scholarships were awarded to winners and top finishers.
Another reason why it's good is it's a team game, definitely. I know there are four people on each team and then an alternate, and it really builds bonding between your players and, you know, you end up making really great friends.
It just is such a great experience to work with these kids.
From here, North Hollywood High School's A-team will then head on over once again to Washington, D.C. for the national competition, where they will crown a United States champion for Science Bowl competition. That's expected in late April and early May. Yana?
Thanks, Gil. North Hollywood's D.C. trip is all expenses paid, and in case you missed L.A.'s Science Bowl, replays will air on L.A.'s PBS station KLCS and right here on L.A. City View Channel 35 in March and April. While the LADWP encourages Angelenos to take advantage of its solar rebate programs, Mayor Eric Garcetti marks the Chinese New Year, and improvements at a South L.A. park promotes accessibility for everyone. All these stories in City Beat. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti hands L.A. resident Gladstone Williams a rebate check from the city after Williams installed solar panels at his home on Buckingham Road. The Williams family took advantage of DWP incentives that helped pay for the installation and which officials say will help them save an estimated $1,000 each year on their power bills. LADWP's Marcy Edwards joined Garcetti to encourage Angelenos to participate in the many energy and water programs available.
$100 million is allocated for you, and 70 million is still available, so call us now.
Mayor Garcetti also recently joined the Chinese Consul General Liu Zhan and the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board to celebrate the Chinese New Year and mark 2016 as the Year of U.S.-China Tourism. The mayor wished the new year to be filled with prosperity, passion, and purpose. He also highlighted the growing ties between China and L.A., saying that Los Angeles has become the gateway and most important travel corridor to and from China.
The Chinese have seen a city that is marked by innovation, by friendship, by warmth, by great sights and great people as well.
Community members and city officials recently celebrated the grand opening of the Jackie Tatum Harvard Park in South L.A. The newly-designed playground includes a brand-new colorful playground structure with resilient surfacing, new fencing, and landscape improvements. The park was designed by Shane's Inspiration, an organization committed to creating inclusive and accessible play structures.
Everybody can get out and play. Everybody can play together. We can get physical fitness, and we can learn to get along with each other.
City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, the Los Angeles Bureau of Street Services, the L.A. Department of Transportation, and members of the Civil Lake community dedicated streetscape improvements that officials say will help enhance the visitor experience along Sunset Boulevard in Sunset Junction. Councilmember Farrell said this project will make the area more inviting, more walkable, and safer for pedestrians. The scope of the project included repairing 7,600 square feet of damaged sidewalk, 450 linear feet of curb and gutter replacement, and the planting of an additional 12 street trees along a quarter-mile stretch of Sunset Boulevard between Santa Monica Boulevard and Edge Cliff Drive. Improvements also included adding 20 bike racks, improved bike lanes, and the widening of sidewalks.
It is an improved environment for pedestrians, and people will stick around longer. It's good for the economy. It improves the look and the feel of our neighborhoods, and it's spiritually uplifting, quite frankly, because it looks better and it feels better.
The official L.A. 2024 Olympic logo and slogan were recently unveiled, inviting the world to follow the sun and their dreams. Anna Marcos has the details.
L.A.'s new 2024 Olympic Games candidate logo appeared on the screen to resounding applause. A vision of an angel-like creature looking to the sun, a fitting image for the City of Angels.
And our vision is as bold as the sun that nurtures this city every day.
This City of Angels is a crucible of optimism, hope, and imagination, and it is these very qualities that are what the Olympic movement needs today.
City leaders believe they have a winning combination as they compete against four cities, Hamburg, Budapest, Paris, and Rome, to host the Olympic Games in 2024.
In 2024, I want to go.
Did I mention that 97% of our venues already exist, are already planned, or will be temporary? We only have to build one venue to host the Games. This is unprecedented in Olympic bidding.
It's just going to be a huge boost for our community.
And athletes will not only have an ideal climate and facilities to compete in, they will also have an ideal place to stay as well.
L.A. 2024's Olympic Village at UCLA will offer an experience for the athletes like never before, because their Games experience is the first and last consideration in all of our planning.
What I like the most about L.A. is that no one has to be an American to feel at home here.
Mayor Garcetti tried a special appeal to the Swiss-based International Olympic Committee.
Suivez le soleil avec nous. Merci.
French greeting, check. Beautiful angel and sun-drenched logo, check. Olympic facilities ready to go, check. Special t-shirts, friendly climate, and friendly people, check. If L.A. clinches the Olympic spot in 2024, it would be the first time it hosts the Olympics since 1984. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
A recent Loyola Marymount University study found that 88% of Angelenos support Los Angeles hosting the 2024 Olympics. While what was billed as the largest youth job fair in L.A. history drew 6,000 applicants to downtown, as Gil Reyes reports, this happened as the mayor set new hiring goals for the year.
Young people ages 16 to 24 crammed into the L.A. Convention Center looking for work.
So far, I'm pretty interested with Target has to offer and what Starbucks has to offer.
Target, Starbucks, Microsoft, Hilton and Hyatt Hotels, also FedEx. More than 30 employers held job interviews, and some even hired people on the spot at the L.A. Opportunity Youth Job Fair. Though the country's jobs outlook has improved, Department of Labor studies show unemployment remains high among young adults. The goal here, to hire 100,000 young people for mostly entry-level jobs.
We've met some great folks. We've gotten some good names. We're going to follow up with them. We've got a lot of people applying for work, so it's been very good.
The fair also gave pointers on how to write online resumes and conduct job interviews. Nordstrom department stores was hiring, and also offered tips for dressing for success.
So they're learning about what patterns go together, what their fits should look like.
People are really open to what you have to say. They're really helpful with any questions that you may have on finding a job.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti was impressed with the turnout.
There's 6,000 stories that are going to be walking around this convention center today, and I know each one of them is going to start a brave new chapter.
The mayor has set a goal of hiring 15,000 young people in the city of L.A. this year. He hopes to do that through collaboration between business and local government. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Starbucks Coffee spearheaded the job fair with help from the Rockefeller and MacArthur Foundations. While enjoying majestic migration along the coast, it's that time again to ditch your car and go for a bike ride during Sicla Via and get up close and personal with some unique sea creatures. That's all in this week's things to do. Southern California summer tourists may have come and gone, but this winter, a different type of tourist will be traveling along the West Coast and heading to Baja during its annual migration, the majestic California gray whale. The whales began their migration in late November, but in March, hundreds of these 35-ton leviathans will splash through the seaside community of Dana Point, California, the West Coast's premier location to meet and greet these incredible creatures during the annual Dana Point Festival of Whales. Festival highlights include an opening-day parade, street fair for culinary lovers of all ages, art exhibits, classic car exhibits, paddling events, sand sculpting, concerts on land and water, environmental activities, educational opportunities, kids' activities, and of course, whale-watching excursions on a variety of vessels, or whale-watching from breathtaking Dana Point Headlands Conservation Park. Mark your calendar for two weekends of fun and festivities, March 5th and 6th and 12 and 13th in Dana Point Harbor. For more, visit festivalofwhales.com. Jump on your bike for a Sicla Via, which opens roads to bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-car traffic. The next event will be held in the San Fernando Valley on Sunday, March 6th. The four-mile route encourages people to bike or walk between various neighborhoods from Pocoyoa to Panorama City. Officials said participants will be able to explore these diverse neighborhoods and discover new businesses. Expect music, street performances, and food trucks, as well as general whimsy and shenanigans. Shop owners and restaurants along the Sicla Via route will also open their doors. The festival goes from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. For more, visit siclavia.org. Well, you don't see them very often, but there are certain times of the year when some sea animals get washed up on shore, and you can check them out in their natural habitat during Cabrillo Marine Aquarium's seasonal public tide pool walks, where visitors get up close and personal with a variety of sea animals. Come see what a low tide leaves behind on March 5th from 12:00 to 1:30 p.m. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
It all started that one day. I knew then my destiny. To have a career where I can achieve my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie VanderGeeest, and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hola, soy Marisol desde Canoga Park, la ciudad toda americana. Estás viendo L.A. City View, Canal 35. Nuestra ciudad, nuestro canal.
Good morning, good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum again today. It's Tuesday, March 1st. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Anglener, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Carretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rue, Wesson. 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rue moves, Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Let's rise. We'll be led today by Mr. Mike Bonin.
Everybody, please place your hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Madam Clerk, why don't we begin by going through today's agenda?
Mr. President, their request to continue items 17 and 25 to March 2nd. Further, their request to continue items 1H, Q, and AB for 30 days to March 29th, and a request to continue 10 and 40 to March 15th.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed. 1D, K, P, T, X, Z, and AA, as the liens have been paid in full, and 1C and M, as the properties have been determined to be owner-occupied and ineligible for lien processing. Additionally, the department recommends that the lien amount of 1G be reduced to
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. That brings us where?
Items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Let's hold those items and continue.
Items 5 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members specials. Mr...any specials? Let's prepare then to vote on these items. Let's open the roll.
Are we there?
We'll hold 20 for Mr. Buscaino. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, on item 5, those ordinances will be held over to March 15th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, if we get 12, please remind me, and we'll just take care of them right now. So let's move on to the next set of items.
Items 21 through 34 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 24, 26, 27, 32.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 35 through 37 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes. And let's move on.
On the supplemental agenda, items 38 and 39 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee report for item 38 has been submitted and circulated for council consideration, and item 39 should be held at this point.
All right, well, let's vote on... All right, well, let's vote on the remaining item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's continue.
On the supplemental agenda, items 40 to 45 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 40, 41 and 43.
Okay, let's vote on the items that don't have cards. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. That brings us where?
Mr. President, it takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
All right, let's start. We'll do an item, maybe two. Let's go to item 43, Mr. Walsh. Item 43.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Item 43. This amends a contract with the California Institute of Arts for another $169,000. I say to everyone out there to take a good look at the state of the sidewalk in front of your house and realize this $149,000 is going to a friend of Mitch O'Farrell, who's getting $149,000 for, I think it's ballet dancing. So ballet dancing is much more important to the city, Institute of the Arts ballet dancing, than to clean this city up, to get rid of the gangs and to fix the sidewalks. That's what we're dealing with in this city. $169,000 for arts development trust fund and for making movies matter. Movies matter because the academy is racist. This $149,000 goes to institute more racism.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Mr. Rue, would you like, uh... I may do one before... Why don't you get ready, but I'm gonna do item 24. So if I could get mi... Uh, item 24, Donna Pierman and Monica Mia, please come forward. Item 24. Yes?
Good morning, council members. This item is for an affordable housing development, 125 apartments with 63 apartments for the homeless and the chronic homeless. I wanted to thank you so very much for your support for our homeless residents in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pierman?
Another wasteful project for a bunch of home... Affordable housing for the homeless who was probably there for a very short period of time. My time is not working here, so I don't know how much timing I'm having here. So, okay, good. So, um... Yeah, we want, we want is real opportunity, ones where people can actually have, uh, have housing that will stay there. But what they do is they get these homeless people over there and they're only gonna sh... Stay there for a short period of time, 'cause after a while, they won't be able to afford to be able to live in these houses, and then they move on, and then they get new homeless people who also will then move on, and we don't, it's not an area where these people will actually get an opportunity. So, uh, when in the meantime, everyone else is paying for temporary housing for the homeless. So, eh, this is a bad idea! So, uh, let's, um, not go for this huge matrosity that's only gonna help people for a very short temporary time. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have 12. Mr. O'Farrell? Fourth with on that item. Uh, we do have 12. Why don't we vote on reconsideration for, is that item 5? So, on item 5... Oh, and Mr. Buscaino, what was the other item?
44.
So we'll vote on reconsideration for 44 as well. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now on item 5, we'll vote on the actual item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Rue, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, City Council-
Fourth with on 5.
And good morning, City Council colleagues. It's that time of the year again. Time for the March of Dimes. I remember when I was in elementary school, getting those little envelopes, going home, trying to look for any change around the couch or whatnot to bring it back to my teacher for that little sticker. But you know, the March of Dimes has become a lot more sophisticated, but their mission has still remained the same, and it's a mission of service. And the United States has one of the highest premature birth rates of any high resource county, country. Premature birth is the leading cause of death for newborns in the United States. The leading cause of death among children of five around the world. The March of Dimes works on a national level, but its mission is a very local one. In one year in Los Angeles County, 125,221 babies are born. 11,688 are born prematurely. A little less than 10% of the babies in LA County are born preterm compared to the California rate of 8.8. 3,800 babies are born with a birth defect. 570 babies die before their first birthday. These numbers are too high. The March of Dimes is working to reduce them. They help through community outreach, advocacy, research and education. Babies who survive an early birth may have lifelong health problems such as cerebral palsy, vision and hearing loss, and learning disabilities. As a healthcare advocate and chair of the Health, Mental Health and Education Committee, I believe that it's important that we invest in programs like these to provide a brighter future for all our children in Los Angeles. We are proud that the City of LA is committed to healthy babies, so let's have a great march for babies. And with that, I'd like to introduce Allison Spif... Sprifkin, Development Director in the Greater Los Angeles Division of the March of Dimes.
Allison, please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rue, and thank you to the entire council for having us here today. I just want to say a huge thanks to the City of Los Angeles, who has been a very, very longstanding partner of the March of Dimes. City employees have raised millions of dollars over a decades-long relationship, and they will continue to do that this year, and for that, we are very grateful. I am myself what we call a mission mom, which means that I had a premature baby who was born 15 weeks early back in 2007. He was one of the statistics that Councilmember Rue just referred to, and he, I'm happy to say that today he is a happy, healthy, thriving eight-and-a-half-year-old with no residual effects of his prematurity, and that is largely due to the efforts of people like the employees of the City of Los Angeles. So on behalf of March of Dimes, both professionally and personally, I thank you for your hard work and for the dedication of your employees, and I'd also like to say a thank you to Chief Jamie Moore with the LA Fire Department, who for the second year in a row has agreed to lead the campaign, and we are extremely grateful for, for Chief Moore and for the Los Angeles Fire Department for their commitment to healthy babies. Thank you.
Now, thank you.
And I'd like to introduce and bring up Battalion Chief Jamie Moore, who is, the LA Fire Department has for its second year, as Allison said, have taken the lead in the City of LA for the March of Dimes.
Welcome, Chief.
Good morning, council members. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. The Los Angeles Fire Department has once again chosen to be the lead agency for this worthy cause, and we want to remind everyone, you don't have to have a sick child, have a sick baby, or be premature to be affected all by the March of Dimes. We were all there. We were all infants. It's a fight for healthy babies, and your Los Angeles firefighters are committed to fighting for healthy babies. So please join in this campaign. You're gonna have members from your different departments contacting you. The walk is April 30th, and we encourage you all to participate and support those who will be walking, and please join us on that special day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I'll make sure that my office sends out all the information for the March of Dimes to all the council offices, and thank you to the March of Times, March of Dimes for advocating for all our children, and on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this proclamation to Allison. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and bo- Okay, let's go to item 26. I believe we have Ms. Pierman and Mr. Spindler. Come on now, Ms. Pierman.
26, oh, yeah, okay. This shows another senseless murder, the shooting death of a Deverick Mathis. It shows why we have to have our Second Amendment rights, which shows why the Republicans are right, that number, uh, are numbered, uh, our right to bear arms is the most important one, because there's people out there that will want to murder people, and if they thought that people had the right to carry, if they'd be carrying, these people would not, would not be senselessly murdered. We have to find a way, we have to protect ourselves, 'cause the police are not there all the time to protect us, so we have to protect ourselves, and I know it's one of these another reward motions, of course, snitches get stitches, so you're not gonna be able to get anything, you're wasting your time, and in the meantime, we can't protect ourselves, so right on number two, right on the Republican Party, and let's get rid of these reward motions, they don't work. Thank you.
Okay.
Stitches get snitches, bitches of the LAPD! Vote no on this reward! It takes too fucking long to get the money for these rewards! Up on the 10th floor today, it took five fucking years to get $75,000. How long is it gonna take to get $50,000? The only reason he got the $75,000 is 'cause Mitchell Englander's running for supervisor, or the 75 wouldn't have been paid.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
$75,000 is offered by whom? By gangsters! Call police department officials! You have gangsters offering $50,000 to apprehend fellow gangsters! What the fuck kind of insanity is this? We don't need this bullshit! No on this item! Why? Fuck the police!
Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Sadio, are you ready with your presentation? The floor is Mr. Sadio's.
Mr. President, and I see a lot of smiling faces as we are here today to acknowledge Tom Drissler's retirement from the City of Los Angeles. Tom has a, yes, distinguished career with the airports and the Department of Transportation. He's an Angelino, graduate, 1970 Daniel Murphy High School, and a degree in sociology, that's why we have an affinity. He and I are sociologists by training, which gives us the art of observation, and a Masters of Administration from the University of Southern California. We don't hold that against him. Tom joined the city family in 1986, where he worked on the Landside Operations Bureau for the Department of Airports at LAX, and where he was assigned at the coordinating and regulating of operations of taxicabs and charter, limos and buses. He was instrumental in establishing the LA Police Ground Transportation Enforcement Unit, and as you recall, during that time period, there were a lot of bandit taxicabs, and he was very involved in that. Tom prepared the specifications and administered the contract for the first automatic vehicle ID system in 1989 at LAX, and earned a recognition of appreciation at the Third Annual Awards of the Excellence of Productivity Commission and Productivity Information Network of the City of Los Angeles in 1991. In 91, he became the first Department of Airports employee in many years to earn the prestigious accreditation AAE from the American Association of Airport Executives. In 99, he was promoted to become the first taxicab administrator for the City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation, where he provided executive support for the Board of Taxicab Commissioners. You may recall, that's when we wrote legislation in Sacramento to collaborate with the city. And Tom was, has very ably represented the city for many years as a member and director of the International Association of Transportation Regulators, including the last two years as Chair of the IATR Board of Directors. Colleagues, joining me in thanking Tom Drissler for his 30 years of service to the City of Los Angeles. 30 years of service to the City of Los Angeles is very significant. And deserves that acknowledgement. He is here with family and friends. Tom, please share a brief synopsis of that career of yours in 30 years.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio. It's been very generous of you to, to sponsor this, and I want to express my appreciation to your staff, their dedication, their professionalism, and, you know, over the years, I've interacted with council members and staff over the years, and I've always been impressed with the dedication and professionalism of council members and, and all the staff members that are constantly extremely busy. It was, it really made it joyful working for them, even on contentious issues. It's, it's been a good run. I really enjoyed my time working for the City of Los Angeles and serving the people in the city. You know, I've dealt with a fair share of controversies. It's nice now that I've been able to step away and have some of those burdens off of my mind. But, um, I just, I want to thank everybody for this, this recognition. This is really nice. This is a great way to go out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, let's go to item 1. Mr. Walsh, Ms. McAllister and Mr. Spindler on item 1. Please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Here we are, building and safety, confirmation of liens for nuisance abatement costs. And we have three pages, four pages of them, going all the way, 20, 30 of them. Again, when you do a good job, I am the first to congratulate all 15 of you and the mayor. And on these issues, these landlord-tenant issues, you are doing a very good job. I'm not here to say the same thing about the crooks. I'm not that kind of old white guy. I'm saying that you've done an excellent job, and when I had any problems with my landlord, the city came in and straightened everything out. Thank you very much. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McAllister.
Good morning, Mr. President. Now, I have a solution here. As you know, I'm very concerned about people being on the street. And I'm seeing men and women dressed in suits, just like you, carrying three or four suitcases. So you're susceptible to being homeless, too. Now, we have a program that you're funding, and you're not using it the way you should be using it. It's called the Handy Worker Program. And I see right here that you've got $2,800,000 sitting in there that was just funded. Now, this Handy Worker Program allows a maximum of $5,000...
Ms. McAllister, get on the agenda. We're on item 1.
This is item 1. What are you doing?
No, the Handy Worker Program...
The Handy Worker Program helps people get their homes fixed up.
No, but still, just stay...
Don't you cut me off. This is very important.
No, 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 Ms., go ahead, but you have to, you have to stay on the item. You have to stay on the item. You're off the item. Thank you very much. Mr. Spindler, come forward. No, you're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. Please, Ms. McAllister, sergeants, remove Ms. McAllister. No, I've already warned you three times. Mr. Spindler, there's another warning. Remove her from the council chambers. She is continuing to disrupt. Mr. Spindler, come forward. Item 1. Please stay on the subject.
What is the meaning of this? So, there we go. We're continuing the fight in CD 9. 1A is in CD 9. B, C, and we need those to be removed by, and item 1A, D, by Corin Price. And then we need CD 8S and U removed by Marquezey, because CD 8 and 9 are doing business differently. I looked on the website. Come, if you have liens in CD 8 and 9, they will be forgiven. And finally, an N and O are in David Rue's district, so please forgive the liens in CD 4. Yes, David Rue, yes, David Rue.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move to item 2. Mr. Walsh, item 2. Mr. Spindler as well on item 2.
Number 2, this relative, what this is, the vacation. In other words, they're getting rid of the northerly side of Abbott Kinney, 100, 200 feet because of, the reason, if you can see here, is it's gang-infested. They can't control Venice. Venice is run by the gangs. So what LA is doing now is retreating and giving more and more land to the gangs. And if you go to LA, if you go to Venice and you get shot, don't expect the cops to do anything because they're afraid. See what it says here? The northerly side of Abbott Kinney, little by little, the gangs take over the city, and all they have to do to keep the city, keep taking over, is give you campaign contributions, which they do.
Mr. Spindler.
Yes, this is an item requiring me to wear a hood. Some do. So we're talking about the destruction of Abbott Kinney Boulevard. Abbott Kinney is now a gang-infested zone. If you live on Abbott Kinney or near the ocean by Abbott Kinney, evacuate immediately. Think of it as a porter ranch with gangs. Get out of that place. Abbott Kinney is the most dangerous neighborhood ever made. And why is it so dangerous? Because of Bonin, that's why. $47,080 of payoff money. They're going to see if it works. Will the gangs take it? Why do I have to wear a hood? Because $47,080 is not enough to ensure anonymity? So all of you wealthy, white Anglo-Saxon scumbag cocksuckers with those houses, move away from Abbott Kinney now.
Let us vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move to 27. Ms. Pierman, item 27, you and Mr. Spindler.
Again, we have another one I was talking about, responsible shooting death of Akomesa Baraka Jefferson, and an injury of Dejean Freeman. Again, that shows again that we got to have the right to be able to protect ourselves. So the Second Amendment right is the very first one, the most important right, because the police are not going to be out there to protect us. In that fact, I think we should have the right to carry. And it shows over here that, again, another reward motion for somebody who's not going to be able to do this. You're not going to be able to find anybody who's going to come up to want to get shot for this reward motion, because they'll never get the reward motion. And as I said, in the fact, that we got to be able to bring out the Second Amendment rights a lot bigger and better than it ever was, because there's, the police can't protect us. That's as simple as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
So we have $75,000 for a death and an injury. That's only $37.5 for each Negro on this item. It should be 75,000 times two. Why is a black man half a man on a fuck...
Wait, 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 hold this time. Mr. Spindler, Mr., hold, hold. Mr. Spindler, Mr. Spindler, just hold. I received, you guys cannot holler into the mic. It is adversely affecting the people that do the translation. So please speak with a level tone without hollering into the microphone. Now, start this time. Continue.
It's not my fault you use broken, mismanufactured equipment.
No, you stay on the item.
And I am. I'm trying to speak on item 27, and why it's not $150,000? Because it's two people. Why is it that a reward has to be aggregated? Because a black man is not counted as a single human. I don't understand. $75,000 means the life of a Negro is only worth $37.5. I think that is total fucking bullshit. Vote no on this item unless it's doubled, because why? Fuck the police.
All right, let's, Mr. Rue, did you want to speak on this subject?
No, not on this subject.
I'll get you the next one. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That's approved. So, Mr. Rue, it's my understanding you want item 40 reconsidered? So why don't we vote on reconsideration of item 40? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And it's my understanding you have an amendment?
I have a small technical amendment to change the streets from 4th Street between McCadden and Las Palmas to 4th Street between McCadden and Highland Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Now, let's vote on that.
Do you have someone on who held it, too? A speaker, no? No, okay.
Now, let's... Is there a card on item? Did somebody fill out a card on item 40? Are you in the audience? If that was you, Mr. Spindler, item 40, come on.
Why am I talking about this? Why? Because it's in CD 4? Because CD 4 has been replaced by a former scumbag in favor of a real life...
No, 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 Mr. Spindler, hold the time again. Mr. Spindler, you are not going to yell and scream into the microphone. I have received complaints from the people that do our translation. I will not allow you or anyone else to do that. So you can speak, but in a normal tone, and stay on the subject.
Yes, but, I mean, it's a, it's a PA system.
No, no, you're off the subject. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. You don't want to cooperate. Thank you. Your time is up. All right, let's prepare. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's, you're continuing to disrupt. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes. As amended.
You're continuing to disrupt, Mr. Spindler. Next time, I have you removed. All right, let's go to the next item. Item 32. Item 32 is you, Mr. Spindler. Come on back, let's see. Oh, no, Mr. Spindler, you're out of time. Ms. Pierman, item 32. So now, Mr. Spindler, you're out of town. Donna Pierman, please come forward. You're out of time.
Again, we got, seems to be overloaded with all these shooting deaths of different people, so I guess they want to see that everybody who's, who got shot, that it looks like the city council cares about the people, and that's why they come up with these rewards. But as I said, it just shows all the time, each and every time, that people should be able to protect themselves. It shows it over and over and over, that police are not, can't protect us all because they can't be in everywhere at once. And these people would think about not shooting these people if we had the right to carry. So our Second Amendment rights is the most, one of the most important rights, because, you know, next night, there will be shooting, next time will be terrorists coming on in. So, so I said, all right with the Second Amendment rights, and okay with the Republican Party. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we're going to move to item 41. Mr. Walsh, item 41. John Walsh, item 41, followed by Ms. Pierman on item 41.
Number 41. This is a reward offer for the unsolved murder of Harvey Medine Coronado. Is he a member of the Medine cartel? I doubt it. But in any case, these are, these rewards are a sick joke on the survivors, on the families, that this reward is $50,000. You can make it $50 million. Snitches get stitches. It is a death warrant for anyone to go to the police, because the police are infested by gangs, people being paid off, the cops being paid off with the gang. They'll finger you, and then you will be killed as a testament, as a warning not to snitch on the gangs, and they deserve to be snitched on. Tell me anybody who's ever been caught for your rewards.
Okay, Ms. Pierman? Donna Pierman?
Yeah.
You have one minute left, Ms. Pierman.
I think I'll pass this one.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we'll move to item 3. Mr. Walsh on item 3. John Walsh, item 3. And you're down to one minute, I'm told.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. This, again, is alcoholic beverages. You never deny alcoholic beverages. We have, people drink, they drive, and they kill. And if the person, if someone is murdered east of La Brea, that means something. That means nothing. If it's west of La Brea, that's where we wealthy whites live. And I'm telling you now, every time you add, for necessity, liquor license for necessity, you fucking scumbags have the blood of blacks and Hispanics on your goddamn motherfucking hands. You vomitous piece of shit, Mr. Rue.
Let's prepare to vote on the, the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move to item 4. One minute on these, since we're not hearing this item, Mr. City Attorney, we're going to go one minute on item 4, correct?
Actually, since it'll be heard again tomorrow, one minute each.
Okay. Mr. Rich, Richard Artistrum, I saw him earlier, yeah, I see him coming up. Mr. Walsh is out of time. Mr. Spindler's out of time. Go ahead, Rich.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Rick Artistrum, Director of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and I'm a small business owner. Agla is against the steep raise in the water rates. I think that's obvious. Owners with units under rent control can only raise their income 3% while utility costs go far beyond the 3%, particularly in this. Also, minimum wage has gone up 50%. Small owners with rent-controlled units will reach a point where they cannot stay in business if their maintenance costs go up faster than their income. So think about that when we're picking out the 3% or 4%. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Benjamin Benimoff, followed by Donna Pierman. Ms. Pierman? And Benjamin? No Benjamin? Going once, twice, thrice? Ms. Pierman?
Okay, we are worried about this, this water increase, and I can't believe Nury voted for this in the past. So we can't really afford the water and power rates as it is, and think about all these people that won't be able to, these water rates are going to kill them. I mean, how are we going to feed our sheep if we, if we raise the water rate?
Cracking yourself up.
So, anyway, off the sheep. That, we can't, you already waste a lot of money on watering things, big, great, big, huge lawns, and nothing gets done by making sure that we don't overuse the water and all these affordable housings that you have with these huge buildings in Westfield, and nobody cares about how much money they use, and if that money hadn't been wasted.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, let's move on to our next item. And, yes, Mr. City Attorney, you wanted to...
Just for clarification, and the... Just for clarification, and the hearing is continued through tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian. I want to defer to you. You can walk us through the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On item numbers 35 and 36, budget and finance considered, the recommendations of the city attorney, those are settlements of lawsuits which can be approved in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item number 37 is going to be continued at the request of the city attorney until March 16th, if that meets with your approval.
Okay, so, item 37, we will continue until the 16th of March, and I want to defer to the clerk. We will take up 35 and 36 at this point, if you could read those items.
On item 35, in the case entitled Caracool Lane versus the City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $450,000 in settlement. And on item 36, in the case entitled Tyler St. Mark versus the City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement.
Okay, let us prepare. Mr. Krikorian, we're going to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
They are approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if I may, I'd also like to ask that items 15 and 38 be sent forthwith, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harris Dawson, you want to take up item 44 at this point? I do have some cards. Would you like for me to do the cards first? You want to do a minute on each card?
I can do the cards first. Minute is fine.
Okay, Ms. Watson, Cheryl Watson, Gilbert Johnson, Lorraine Cantley. Where are you? Where are my speakers? Okay, do we have a 10? Carnegie? Darren Moore? Doron Moore? Please come forward and identify yourself. Yes?
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Watson, and I'm here to urge the council to support Marquise Harris Dawson and Joe Buscano's resolution to support Proposition 47. Proposition 47 is necessary, but the prisoners that are going to be released from prison need adequate services, need adequate resources in order to maintain their cells in the free world. And I'm also advocating for our youth who are not in safe environments in these communities. And we need to invest that money so we can maintain safety for our children, safety for the community, and adequate education so that they can be successful citizens in this city. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please. Please come forward and identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Gilbert Johnson from Community Coalition, and we urge the City Council to also support Marquise Harris Dawson and Joe Buscano's resolution to get Prop 47 fully funded, because when voters passed Prop 47 back in 2014, the will of the voters showed that we want our hard-earned tax dollars redirected out of prisons and into our communities for the supports, the interventions, and the resources that our people need in our communities. We have thousands of folks that are coming home from prison, and for them to successfully reintegrate back into society and to prevent our youth from entering the incarceration or prison system in the first place, our communities need that investment and that support. And we thank you, board, for fully... For fighting and supporting our movement to fully fund Prop 47.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, and if you please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Lorraine, and I'm here to support Prop 47 as well. I work with LA Voice, and I am a member of New Life in Christ Cogic Church. I'm speaking about the hope, the hope that needs to be restored in our communities for our children. A lot of these children, they don't even see a future, and they see that their parents may have to deal with these different circumstances due to them being imprisoned, and these children don't see themselves being able to reach the age 21. So, I'm asking that you guys will support the Prop 47 so we can restore hope in these communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning, Council. My name is Darren Moore. I'm from First to Serve. First, I want to actually thank Harris and Dawson for introducing this resolution. I oversee the Winter Shelter Program, and as of today, you know, we really aren't addressing the homeless situation. But what we do provide for the homeless, for the Winter Shelter, when they come in, we do have case managers that provide them with adequate wraparound services, dental, housing. You have the UCLA Medical Center that comes in. So, and they get free flu shots, they get free TB testing. So, with that, you know, I think it's important that we keep the wraparound services, and I think Prop 47 with the funding can help us continue to provide the homeless with those wraparound services. Thank you.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Good morning, Council. My name is Tim Carnegie, and I'm with LA Voice, and I would also like to thank Councilman Dawson, Councilman Dawson, for his support of Prop 47 and indicate that we would really like to see the... These savings directed towards community-based organizations and faith-based organizations, because I happen to be one of the affected individuals in that I'm formerly incarcerated, and the services that are provided and the belief in redemption and the benefits of social justice really need this funding to help individuals like myself and others returning home from the mistakes that we've made in our past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please identify yourself.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Onisa Hernandez with Drug Policy Alliance. I want to thank you for your efforts around this resolution and want to let you know that we support it. It's a great step. This resolution is a step in the right direction. We are in a statewide and nationwide criminal justice reform movement that has made its way into these chambers, which is really awesome, because many of our constituents support these efforts, and they support the efforts that divert their loved ones into services rather than incarceration. But today, I urge you not only to make this resolution and take this step, but in the future, to consider creating comprehensive, innovative reentry systems that will adequately support our community members and keep them from becoming homeless and preventing them from recidivating. So many people fall through the cracks right now with the current reentry system that we have, and it's not enough. So, in the future, when the money does come in, let's make sure that we keep in the back of our mind that what is... What's going on right now is not enough, and we need to create more services. Thank you.
No more speakers. Let me defer to Mr. Harris Dawson, and then I'll call on you, Mr. Buscano.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Today, I am introducing a substitute resolution in lieu of Friday's original resolution and asking that we join city and community leaders to call on state lawmakers to implement the will of the people of California by fully funding Proposition 47, a key public safety priority in this year's state budget. We are calling on our leaders in Sacramento to ensure local communities, especially here in LA, have the resources they need to keep our community safe and to ensure that they have the ability to meet our public safety needs. Right now, the state of California is saving millions and millions of dollars from not locking people up, from the reclassifications of different offenses, from felonies to misdemeanors. The promise to the voters was that those savings would be redirected back to local communities for programming to make people successful in their reentry and also prevent new people from joining the prison population. And so, we're asking and frankly demanding that the state make good on that promise. There are savings, there's a bit of an argument about how much the savings are. We're falling on the side of thinking that there are more. We need those resources to come to our town to help us deal with the challenges we're
Mr. Buscano.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson, and those who joined us this morning. Bottom line is Prop 47 is under siege. It's under siege because of a promise that was made that cities and counties would receive money to implement robust services for lower-level drug and theft offenders in the form of substance abuse programs and alternative housing. In a time where this country is spending hundreds of millions of dollars, maybe billions of dollars, in incarceration, I'd like to see those billions of dollars be reinvested and redirected to alternative housing and substance abuse programs. And unfortunately, with Prop 47, we have yet to see those dollars come to local governments. It's a shame. Our colleagues in the state government are debating on the price tag. We damn well know that there have been significant cost savings with both Prop 47, AB 109, but yet we are failing to see those dollars come to our local communities. Not only the reduction of some felonies to misdemeanors, we've seen the reclassification of drug offenses, but it also... The significant funding for alternative programs to help break the cycle of petty thefts and drug abuse. This is one of the reasons why I supported Prop 47. In my days, working the streets as a police officer here, I've seen poverty at its worst. You... Number of individuals have turned to a life of crime because of poverty. A number of individuals who have suffered from mental illness have turned to drug abuse. And yet, with this Prop 47 that's been approved by the voters of this state, they've lent a helping hand and a helping heart to those who need the most help. We hear in this horseshoe, one of our own, Mike Bonin, is a prime example of rehabilitation, someone who turned to drugs and told himself he's going to get back on his feet. And that's one of our colleagues today. And we know that hundreds of thousands of individuals in our city and our state can do the same. So, with that, I'm happy to partner with Marquise on this resolution. At the same time, we understand why people in this city are frustrated with Prop 47, because there have been that speculation that we've seen an increase in crime in our city due largely in part of Prop 47. Well, studies after studies show that that's not the case. But yet, perception is reality, and this is why it's important to get those dollars to the local governments so we can help those who need the most help in our cities. Thank you.
Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander?
Thank you. I didn't vote for Prop 47. I didn't support it then, I don't support it now. The fact is, the voters did. The most important element of it was rehabilitation, social programs, helping people. I just didn't believe that would ever happen. I hoped it would, because I do believe that that helps a lot. Giving people a second chance in life is so important. It's what we need to do. We need to make sure that we reduce our rate of recidivism, that people that are getting released from prison, or now, in this case, jail, don't go out to commit the same crime again. We need to make sure that we have mental health programs and social monitoring and protection programs for those very people that can't help themselves, that had never had that ability or that opportunity in life, that never perhaps had local intervention programs or after-school programs. Maybe they dropped out of school, they didn't have a second chance or a third chance. I do believe that those programs help, but the programs have to be funded, and that was my biggest concern. My biggest concern was putting the hook out there, baiting the hook, and then taking the bait away later. It's exactly what we're seeing today. It was sort of what happened with the social... With exactly what happened, quite frankly, with, I believe, with the Safer City Initiative here in Los Angeles. It was supposed to be a partnership with both the county and other social program providers and law enforcement to go out there on Skid Row and many other places to make arrests. LAPD showed up, the city was there, but then there were no programs to service and help people. It failed miserably. I see that happening again now. Crime is a pendulum, and it's going up, because the programs to backfill what was supposed to be promised under Prop 47 haven't occurred. We've seen what's happened with the legislative office and the analysts in Sacramento, saying that this program should be generating about $100 million right now. The county of Los Angeles is getting about $4 million. That's insane. That's criminal. So, the fact is, we've decriminalized the criminal justice system and all of these types of crimes. Dealing with it on the back end is the most important thing, and it's not being done for lack of funds. I absolutely support not only this motion to move forward to make sure we get our fair share of these dollars, but we need these programs here, and we need them yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ru? Mr. Ru?
I just want to rise in support of this motion from Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson and Joe Buscano. We definitely need more funding from the state, and with the projected surplus that the state has, I'm hoping that the governor would use some of that money to fund these programs. And I think there's a lot of legislators from this... From our area, like Senator Holly Mitchell, who's been fighting with the governor for years, asking for some of these budget surpluses to go back down to the communities. Having worked for an agency that had the largest AB 109 program, we were always out of slots. They were filled immediately, and we definitely need more support from the state for them to fund this unfunded mandate. So, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for bringing this forward.
Okay, let's prepare then to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And, Mr. President, the first vote is on a question whether to substitute.
Okay, so, the first vote is on substitution. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now, we're going to actually vote on the issue as amended or substituted. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Mr. Harris Dawson. Fourth with on that. That has been approved. Okay, and Madam Clerk, we're going to continue item 39 until Wednesday... Until tomorrow. So, that brings us to...
And, Mr. President, there's a request to reconsider items on item 1, item 1E, G, N, R, W, and F.
Okay, so, we're going to reconsider these items and then continue them?
That's correct. To be continued to March 29th.
Okay, so, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And these items have been continued until March 29th. That brings us... Mr. Buscano.
I believe it's 20.
Item 20?
Yes, sir. Item 20.
Thank you, Mr. President. I called this item specifically for an amendment. Now, the street name on the item before you is correctly stating South Peck in the council file and also in the resolution that was introduced, but in T Committee, the T Committee report incorrectly calls it the street that we are trying to move forward on the oversized vehicle ordinance is... In the T report, it identifies it as South Park, not South Peck. So, we just wanted to make sure there's consistencies in all the reports. Okay? We good? Thank you.
So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And, Madam Clerk, let's recess this regular meeting, go into a special meeting. Call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Caress, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 14 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. And item 46 on the special agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, so, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, let's recess this special, return to the regular... Or adjourn, my...
Well, before you adjourn, do you want to send this fourth with?
Fourth with. Now, let's adjourn and return to the regular. And so, that brings us where?
To general public comment.
Okay. Mr. Walsh? Ms. Peirman? Mr. Englander, yes?
Just before we go to general public comment, if I could ask item 43 on an urgent fourth with, so I know we'll have to vote on that, but I'd ask for that.
Okay, so, let's vote on urgent fourth with. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
All right, so, go right ahead, sir.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands dot...
All right, so go right ahead, sir. John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to Krikorian recall. This is already organized. It's well-funded. We're sending him to go bye-bye. And anybody but Englander is a movement. We support Arun Ajarian, Mr. Huff, anybody but Englander who looked the other way while SoCal poisoned children. The white people didn't get involved because they're white and they believe in corporations, to their little kiddies started hemorrhaging from the nose. Then they went to the media after SoCal came here two weeks later. And once the media hit it, then England, "Ohhhhhhh", he doesn't give a fucking shit whether you live or die, black, white, or Asian. HollywoodHighlands.org. And the Oscar cast was shit. Thank you, Ms. Donna Pierman, Vanessa Matthews. Donna Pierman, come on. Vanessa Matthews, please come forward, followed by Mr. Previn.
Okay, so for Tuesday, our elections are important to California and Los Angeles. Anyways, I'm sorry, people, but you chose the wrong first black man as president. You should have asked Allen West, A-L-L-E-W, to be that person, highly intelligent black man. Look him up on Google. Anyway, Obama's not for minorities, Hispanics. He's for Muslims, radical Muslims. Obama's administration is giving almost $1,000 each Syrian, just off the boat, plus housing, medical care, and those who want it, work permits, and even social security numbers. No waiting in line, registration fees, background checks, what every person has to go through in nationalization. Hillary agrees with his policies, wants to continue. And so each black man and Hispanic and poor white men, ask yourself, what has Obama done for me? Hillary will do the same, nothing for you. Democrats want only to give entitlements, free help, not hope. We want dreamers in America, not illegals to dreamers. Republicans want you to have opportunity to self-sufficiency, not dependency like the Democrats.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you very much. So if I could have Ms. Matthews, followed by Mr. Previn, go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa Matthews. I was here in Los Angeles a week ago visiting the La Brea Tar Pits. And I'm here to talk about the Los Angeles parking and towing scam. I parked my car last Monday in a metered spot that read enforced 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There was nothing else referenced as far as other signs. So I do like anybody else. I put enough money in the meter to take care of the time where it says it's enforced. I go inside the La Brea Tar Pits and I leave around 7:00. My car is gone. I'm not sure if it's stolen or what has happened. After a few unfriendly phone calls using the local phone numbers and 311, I was able to finally locate my car, maybe before about...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Spindler.
Yes, it's Eric Previn in the public comment. 60 seconds is impossible for anybody to make a cogent remark. I'll do my best. The city attorney of Los Angeles is charged with overseeing these public meetings and the public meetings in your committees and such. Unfortunately, the city attorney appears to have his hands tied at the moment and is unable to take the appropriate action to enforce the Brown Act in numerous instances, which are being chronicled right now and will be brought forward. I can only say that it is a great disappointment that the elected officials who sit around this horseshoe on a weekly basis have consistently simply looked away from what can only be described as violations of the open government laws. This does not just speak to the meeting protocols, but also the way the manage, the records here at City Hall are managed, as we've seen in numerous instances. And I would ask the council's help in identifying who exactly Jamison Properties is, what city departments beyond aging, and I believe there's another department that is renting space from them, are actually renting space from this group because it is, it is beyond the pale. The controller...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Spindler, followed by...
Tired of threats. Stop threatening speakers. Stop trying to throw us out and using horseshit excuses to interrupt us. A million 275,000 in claims I have filed against the city and you dumb fuckers still don't understand it. Up on the 10th floor, that little dwarf cocksucker Mitchell Englander tried to get rid of my cards because I put elf on it. It stands for the Englander Liberation Front, a civil rights group to vote no on that scumbag Mitchell Englander for the Board of Supervisors, a worthless piece of shit. Took all those people in Porter Ranch and fucked them in the ass and took them out of their houses. It took a fucking judge to overturn the eviction notices. And finally, Krikorian signed the petition. Get that cocksucker out of CD2, that fucking piece of...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Ms. Richardson, where are you? What'd you say? Ms. Richardson, come on, dear. Come on now.
Women veterans, including, I suppose, Army, Navy, and Air Force, have the highest suicide rate of any group in the country. Heard that real quick. I don't know where it came from. I'm wondering, what is the problem? They're killing themselves. Are they allowed to bear arms? In other words, they can kill people, throw grenades, kill children if the children are offensive. I'm wondering, what is the problem? Is it because their husbands are not true to them when they get home or they're being harassed? Whatever the problem is, the burden is too hard for them to carry. So they end up killing themselves. And maybe city council may be able to help the ones that go to Los Angeles, to the veterans' organization, help them and find out what the problem is and stop the suicide rate among women. There's no need for them to kill themselves. Everybody has a burden and they can be helped.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred. Again, we are at announcements then? Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Rue, announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Forgot to announce earlier today that the March of Dimes is having a luncheon reception at the Tom Bradley Towers from 12 to 1. So all council members, if you guys could join.
Any further or other announcements? If I could get everyone in the chambers to rise, everybody in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. I'm going to look to my right side, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Betty Bartlada of Atwater Village. Betty was born in Rochester, New York in 1936. She moved with her family following the retirement of her father from the Lehigh Valley Railroad in 1953 to Atwater Village in the 13th District. Betty devoted her life to family, friends, and community. Her family, that numbered more than 100 and ensured the last family reunion she attended in Rochester in 2014, was truly a celebration. She treated her friends like family and was always willing to provide support and a listening ear. She was especially proud of her service to the community. In 1981, Betty assumed the helm of Club TG, known as the Cheers of Atwater Village, and can be seen in lots of television and feature films because of the incredible place that it is. She was actively involved with the Atwater Village Chamber of Commerce for 30 years. In addition, she organized the Lions Club Breakfast for more than 30 years, first starting at the Beach Market and then moving the event to the Wells Fargo Bank Parking Lot there in Atwater Village, right off of Glendale Boulevard. When the Lions Club opened their membership to women, she was one of the first women to join the Griffith Park Lions Club, serving as its president for several years. Betty was very involved with the Cristo Rey Catholic Church Food Fund and generously donated each year. In 2007, then-council member Tom Labonge asked her to arrange for a pancake breakfast for the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life of Griffith Park, and she did so without any hesitation. She passed away on February 25, 2016, following a long illness with family at her side. She is survived by her husband, Bob Kick, hundreds of cousins, and countless friends from across Atwater Village and beyond who knew and loved her. And I have known Betty for 14 years myself and worked very closely with her and was so happy that about a year and a half ago, we honored her and Club TG for its historic presence and its iconic presence there in Atwater Village. Betty will be missed by all, including me. May she rest in peace. And her memorial is this Friday.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Again, looking to my right. Now I'll go to the left side, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of a constituent of mine, Shelley Sloan, who many of you know. Shelley died February 26 and was, his memorial service was held yesterday. He was born on Christmas Day, 1935, in Minneapolis. He attended Los Angeles High School, the UCLA Anderson School of Management and the USC School of Law. He was an attorney with the U.S. Department of Justice in Washington in the early '60s. He was a public member of the State California Board of Registration for Professional Engineers in the early '70s. He was a judge of the municipal, which is now the Superior Court in Los Angeles in the mid-'70s, a member of the faculty of Judges' College in 1975, a member of the Harvard Westlake School Board of Trustees for a decade and a half in the '80s and '90s. He served as president of the Los Angeles County Bar in '96 and '97 and the State Bar in 2006 and 2007. He was a member of the LA County Arts Commission, California Science Center. He was a member of the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Commission. I think he actually served as president there for a time, and a member of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Foundation. He was also president of the Guardians of the Los Angeles Jewish Home for the Aging. He was a member of the Fraternity of Friends of the Music Center. He was chairman there for a couple of years. He served on the Coro Board. At the time of his death, just last week, he was of counsel to the firm of Lewis, Brisbois, Bisgarden, Smith, serving as the chair of their government relations firm. And he also had his own lobbying firm, Sloan Solutions, which lobbied at Metro and the Airport Commission and a number of other places. And he ran that with his longtime associate, Diane Lechner. He's survived by his loving wife, Shelby Jean Kaplan Sloan, his children, Steven Sloan, Jennifer Belushi, and his stepdaughters, Jeannie Izern, Victoria Comissar, his grandchildren, Jude Comissar, Erica Izern, Charlotte Izern, Ashley Sloan, Jared Belushi, Jamison Belushi, Hallie Comissar, Cameron Comissar, Robert Belushi, and his sister and brother-in-law, Robert, Roberta and Wesley, as well as nieces and nephews. And of note, his family wanted to make clear, he's also survived by his Wonder Dog star. And since Shelley was allergic to flowers, he requested that donations be made in his honor to the Guardians of the Los Angeles Jewish Home for the Aging or to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Youth Foundation. He was clearly, as you just heard there, an incredible civic leader who was involved for decades in every element of civic life in Los Angeles. A great and wonderful guy, and he's going to be sorely missed.
He was a man of honor. He was my personal friend. I would love to sign that adjourning motion with you. And he was always into something.
He was.
For the, I've known Shelley since like 1991. He was always into something. He was a very good man and worked at all levels of government. He'd be city, county, transit. He's just a good guy. So I'm still looking to the left side. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. Rise to adjourn in the memory of one of my constituents, Art Ferguson. He was born on April 18, 1944, in Kearney, Nebraska. He later became known, though, as Charlie Tuno. You may have, you may not know his face, but you probably certainly have heard his voice. He worked as the morning drive radio personality for more stations and formats than anyone in Los Angeles history. He did everything from Top 40 to adult contemporary, hot adult contemporary, oldies talk, sports talk, country. He was a legend. He made his debut on Thanksgiving 1967 with KHJ in Los Angeles. His voice was heard for decades on K-Rock, K-Big, K-Earth 101, among many other stations. In 1990, he was honored by the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce with a star on the Walk of Fame and has been recognized as a top 10 LA radio personality in '97, 2007, 2013. He called Los Angeles home for over 50 years. Not only was he a top DJ personality, but he was also a leader in the community and in the West Valley in particular. He was the honorary mayor of Tarzana, and he held that title since 1977. He had a passion for doing good, and he raised $2.5 million for Children's Hospital Los Angeles with his annual Tunathon. He also, he helped me. He did the emceeing at our annual July 4th fireworks extravaganza. And he always just led a little bit of celebrity and stardom to that event and just had this great booming voice, which will certainly be missed. He passed away peacefully in his sleep in Tarzana on February 19 at the age of 71. He will always be remembered for the joy, laughter, and love of music that he shared. Memorial donations could be made to the Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. May he rest in peace.
Seeing no more adjourning motions, members, this meeting is adjourned.